May that the Lord, you continue to bless this assembly and the city of Mission. In Jesus' name, amen. Stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call roll.
Cowdery?
Aye, here.
Councilmember Gibbs is absent tonight. Crane?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Quinn?
Here too.
Rothrock?
Here.
Shepherd?
Here.
Thank you.
Tonight we have a public hearing on Gateway's special benefit. If you'd like to comment on this issue, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Mr. Speaker, may I, if you would, please formally open the public hearing for us?
I open the meeting. Public.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, Court Maxwell, Pulsonelli Law Firm, here tonight representing Gateway developers. First off, I want to apologize that Tom Valenti can't be here. As you all know, Tom, he makes it into town very regularly for every big meeting, and unfortunately, he was detained in Syracuse on this fair project up there on a must-mate hearing and was not able to come down, but wanted me to come in his stead tonight to represent the project and discuss the assessments in front of you and also some of his regrets for not being here. I think as everybody on this council knows, we have had a long, longstanding relationship between the developer and the city of Mission, and because of that longstanding relationship, we find that this hearing that we're having tonight is regrettable. We wish we were. We're not here discussing these, this possible potential imposition of assessments, but we're here. And so, it's with that, I say that we rise and we have significant concerns about these assessments and about what it does to the status of the Gateway project. As I believe everybody on this council knows, we came before you in November to talk about a revised plan. We heard loud and clear from members of the council and your staff that we needed to continue to look on that revised plan, and we have been working on that revised plan and want to bring that forward to this council for consideration. Unfortunately, actions like imposing these assessments are taking time, effort, energy, and resources away from focusing on a revised plan that can help us all develop out of the issue that we have in front of us and instead focus on legal issues and otherwise. And we think that is an improper use of the developer's time at this point, as well as an improper use of the city's time. And quite frankly, ask, why do we need to do this today? What is the driving force that says in January of 2015 that this assessment ordinance needs to be approved? There's nothing in the timeline, in the schedule, in anything related to the assessment ordinance that says now is the time that needs to be act, action needs to be taken. Even if it's the council's full and complete intention that they want those assessments to show up on a tax bill in December of 2015, no action needs to be taken tonight, today. So, we would ask the council to table this ordinance and table this imposition of assessment for a period of time so that we can continue to work on a redevelopment plan collaboratively with the city that meets the city's goals and standards that have always been laid out for the Mission Gateway area. If that's not the will of this council and this body and move forward on this, I would say we have significant questions as a development, as the developer and the owners of this ground regarding the benefited area for the district, the calculation, we've never seen any accounting of the $11,900,000, and also look at any of the issues of offsets that could have occurred given the fact that when we went through this, there was an existing mall, you had no easements, we went forward and demolished a productive asset, we gave you easements at that time, all things that saved the city tens of millions of dollars in accomplishing the greater Rock Creek storm drainage area. We also are payers of the additional mill levy rates that have been put on many properties in Mission, including our property. We would look to an accounting for those dollars as well. We will have to take serious consideration of those factors over the next 30 days if this council moves forward on this. And again, it's not something we want to do, it's not something I have any desire to be here in front of the council tonight and talk about these issues, nor does Tom or any members of the Gateway team. But we have serious question and reservation about this, and we do not understand from a pure timeline perspective of law or policy or given development realities out there today and what we're working on, why this council needs to take action on this assessment ordinance tonight. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'd stand for any questions of the council and yourself or staff, if anyone would like to ask.
Any questions? Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mayor, I would like, and just for the benefit of the public, I think, before we move forward, Gary Anderson with Gilmore and Bell is here, and I think it might be helpful for him to just provide an overview of the process so that the public who is here who may not be as familiar with that has the opportunity to do that, and then we can certainly open the floor about that further.
Yes, sir. Can you wait for someone to break? For Gary to speak?
Yeah, I'll yield to him.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Gary Anderson with Gilmore and Bell, upon counsel for the city. As Laura said, I think it'd be helpful to maybe talk just a little bit about the background and the process and where we are in the process and what the additional steps are to complete the process. So, back in February of 2007, the city adopted a resolution regarding the advisability of the stormwater improvements on the Gateway site. Subsequent to that, the city financed approximately $12 million of stormwater improvements on the site, and everyone has been working diligently for a number of years to try to make a project happen on that site with the anticipation that a good portion of that $12 million stormwater improvements would be reimbursed to the city through various financing vehicles. Unfortunately, none of that has occurred to date, so after discussions back in December, this body adopted a resolution approving the final cost and calling this public hearing, which is the next step in the special assessment process. Again, both published notice was given in connection with the public hearing as well as certified mail notice to the sole property owner who Mr. Maxwell represents. Again, the public hearing is intended to give the property owner and members of the public the opportunity to convey their thoughts to the governing body regarding the assessment process. If you decide to proceed with the assessment ordinance tonight, then there would be publication of that ordinance, there would be notice to the property owner, the property owner then has a 30-day opportunity under state law to prepay the assessments. If they do not prepay the assessments, then the city would give notice to the county clerk by August 25th or whatever the August date is, and then the first assessment would be imposed on the December tax bill for the next 20 years that approximately $600,000 would be due. So, that's really kind of the summary of the process and the history. I think from the city's standpoint, the feeling has been of the governing body, you know, we invested $12 million in this property with these stormwater improvements and that we need to take actions with respect to reimbursing ourselves for those funds that we've invested in this property over 20 years. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding the process or the procedure.
Any questions? Just one. So, public hearing tonight and then the resolution to move forward with the benefit district, would that come up this evening as well?
Yes, there's the ordinance that would impose the special assessments is in the packet for consideration after the close of the public hearing. As Mr. Maxwell said, you can consider it tonight, you can close the public hearing and consider it at a subsequent date. I think the intent had been, let's move forward, let's complete the process, let's get it to the county clerk so we can make sure it's on the tax bill come this December.
Gary, is this the first time the developer is hearing of the special benefit district and the potential fees assessed?
No, I mean, this has been part, if you recall, going back to the 2007 action, the intent had always been that if for some reason we were unable to issue other types of bonds, whether they were STAR bonds, TIF bonds, whatever it may have been, to reimburse the city all or part of the $12 million that you invested in the property that the special benefit district was the backstop to make sure the city was going to get reimbursed for its investment. So, it's been involved in all the development agreements, back to the resolution. The resolution is actually recorded against the property, so both the property owner and their lender and any subsequent owner would have had notice of the potential imposition of these special assessments.
So, there is a signed redevelopment agreement today that includes, or a development agreement today that includes the information about this district?
Yes.
And then, Gary, one other thing. So, and maybe this is more for the benefit, and you'll say it better than I will, for the benefit of the public, when a property is in the floodplain, it can't be improved or it can't be replaced unless that floodplain is mitigated, correct? And so, and I know you're bond counsel, not land use, so you may be out on the skinny branches here, but the only way something gets, either the mall got improved by 50% of its overall value or knocked down and rebuilt was with the Rock Creek floodplain being mitigated.
Again, I'm not your land use attorney, but that's my understanding, you have to build up out of the floodplain.
Did you have a question?
Yeah, you have a question. Mr. Maxwell alluded to possibly tabling this motion tonight and putting it off for some time because the developer has been working diligently on another plan to bring before us. What would be the, I guess, the downsides of putting this, tabling this for another month or two? It's not going to affect the timeline of what we have to do here.
I think if you complete the public hearing and close the public hearing, you can either consider the ordinance tonight or you can wait a little while if that's the will of the council. I think if you do decide to wait, I think you want to just do it in plenty of time so that we can get the ordinance published, get the 30-day opportunity for the property owner to prepay. So, you're talking about probably the latest you would want to do it is probably early June or so, but you could do it next month, the following month, you can do it tonight. It's probably not going to affect the time frame.
Is Mr. Maxwell suited? Could I ask a question, Mr. Maxwell? How soon is the developer ready to bring us that updated plan?
Was able to, Councilman Quinn, I was able to talk with Tom today in preparation for this and know that they are weighing and costing several concepts and ideas and think that they'll have some cost estimates back on that in the next week. To have that then be something that's ready to bring to the full council, I would, you know, 30, 60 days, something to that, that I think there could be significant communication back. In every case, you know, nothing that we're running up against a June deadline, as Gary said, so if there was 30, 60 days, something like that, I think that would be appropriate for the council to then be able to reconsider the ordinance at some point.
Thank you. If we pass that tonight, that is, we'd have to implement it, for sure, is there? I mean, isn't there always a back plan to?
I would not recommend that approach because...
I mean, it's going to be several public hearings before we're allowed to do this, isn't it?
As far as the assessments? No, this is the last step.
This last one?
This is the last step in the process. So, my recommendation would be that you complete the public hearing, close the public hearing, and then make a determination as to whether you want to proceed on the ordinance levying, the assessments tonight, or you want to defer that. But by completing the public hearing process, you have completed all the necessary steps so then it can just be put on the council's agenda to consider the ordinance. There's no notice of it being posted on your agenda.
Any more questions?
Just on a professional level, I really wish Pete Heaven would have been here tonight. He is so intimately involved in every facet of this relationship between the city and Tom Valenti. I would really like his input on this. We have tried diligently to continue ongoing relationships with Tom. I know he's left me several messages at home, I'm not answering them. I've been involved from the very beginning, when Tom first walked in this door, had such high hopes for him. I'm not delusionary, I'm just totally disappointed right now. What you could bring forth in terms of another development plan, if it looks anything like the one we saw for the last four months, it's very doubtful that anything will go through, on my part, I'll tell you that right now. To defray any timeframe, whether it be two months or three months, I would like to know, you know, from your perspective and from Tom's, what is in this for the city to go on for another three or four months if we don't have something palatable to look at in terms of redevelopment plans?
Is there a question?
And I think, hey, Councilwoman, as I think I said before, I think the message of the council and the public was received aloud and clear regarding the November development plan. So, all the plans that are being worked on have significant elements of multi-story brought into it, just like the MXD code calls for it, over 50%, above ground floor retail, additional retail, possibly additional residential, possibly additional multiple components that are all being considered. So, I think what the council has to look forward to is the ability to complete a Gateway project. Passing this assessment ordinance tonight, as Gary just answered, it's the last step. It then starts a irrevocable process, and there's the lender for us sitting in the audience here tonight. That will cause significant pressure on this project and I think sets us on a course that is much different than trying what we have been doing for eight years with hard work to try to develop out of this and make it a win-win for everybody.
And as much as I appreciate the economic stance that you're in, you have stockholders, we have these people out here at the answer to, and they've been waiting very patiently.
And I understand that, Councilwoman, and I recognize that, and my client recognizes that. But what I would also ask them to understand, as Gary just laid out, this doesn't accomplish anything tonight. It does not have to happen tonight. If the goal of the council is to still have these assessments hit under Kansas law in December 2015, there is no reason this ordinance has to pass tonight. Absolutely not. We can wait four to five months before this ordinance has to pass, and I understand that if the council is ultimately to that position and we all have to do what we all have to do at that point. But there's nothing that it accomplishes tonight but setting up a course of action that is much different than the collaborative relationship we have had for eight years working towards a goal of developing a first-class project.
I didn't hear a threat there, did I?
No, I'm just, it's not a threat. That is absolutely saying, if we go down this course, we all have to do what we have to do, but there's no reason to need to do this tonight. Just legally, technically, there is nothing the council gains by doing this tonight. And if five months from now or four months from now, when you decide that it's time to take that action, you will talk with your advisors and do what you need to do.
Mayor, I might, also, Councilmember Crane, Mr. Heaven did intend to be here this evening, and he had a conflict that came up late this afternoon, and since this is strictly procedural from the benefit district perspective, we also did not invite Mr. Kimmel or others that have been part of negotiating the entire development agreement because tonight our focus really is taking that next procedural step.
One more question. So, if that does not go through tonight, when is the latest we could put it through to hit on the tax bills for next year?
It would probably be around the middle of June, I'm just trying to think the timing of, because you've got to adopt the ordinance, then it's going to be published following week, and you've got to give the 30 days' notice for the prepayment, so early to mid-June, off the top of my head.
Probably the council, last council meeting in May, just to line up the timing with the certification and the processes would be the safest since we meet later in the month. But yes, May or June, I can't remember.
So, I have another question then. If we tabled this, let's say, till March or whatever, and before we took action, and they came back at our committee meetings in March, the developer did a plan, what would be the timeline to get that plan approved and, in other words, would it take us longer than June?
Well, I think that may be one of the challenges.
All right.
Because, you know, these, as you're all aware, these types of projects are very complicated, both from a zoning, a planning, and a financing standpoint, and, you know, you're going to be negotiating probably a substantial change to the TIF plan, probably to the development agreement. All of that will take time and effort, even if everybody's working to get, excuse me, working together very collaboratively to get to the finish line, and if you sort of miss the timeframe, then you basically have to wait a whole nother year. So, it would be December of '16 before that assessment could go on. I mean, it's not like you lost the opportunity to get your money back, but, you know, it's the opportunity cost of waiting another year before they start to make those assessments.
I'm Gary, and I hope this isn't, I know, again, you're not, but you were a part of the development agreement execution. What was the timing of a significant portion of this development, having been complete, supposed to be kind of like the milestones that we were all under the impressions of? I believe, I guess what I'm trying to get at is, I believe we all at the council, when we executed that development agreement, what was it, two years ago this month? We believe a significant portion of this development was supposed to be completed by the end of last year, right? Is that?
I thought it was December of '15.
No, December of '15, so substantial completion by December 31st of 2015. And I believe the project had to be started, construction was to be started by June 1st of 2013, with substantial completion by December 31st of 2015. The other milestones were more dependent on the timing and the release of the financing mechanisms, but those were the two primary triggers within the existing development agreement. And per existing development agreement, when was it anticipated this special development or this special assessment would go into play?
Well, if you recall, the expected outcome under the development agreement was that the city was going to be reimbursed out of TIF bonds or CID bonds or some combination of both so that it would not have been necessary to impose the special assessments. Again, this was always intended to be a backstop in case you did not get reimbursed, which is what the current status is.
And to Councilmember Crane's point, the backstop for the reimbursement or the TIF and CID reimbursement is to repay taxpayer dollars who have already been invested in the improvement from a stormwater perspective on the property.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Any more questions?
Frank Bruce, fifty-seven oh six Lamar, and even God's patience eventually runs out. And I read the newspaper every day, Kansas City, Missouri, southeast Kansas City, northeast Johnson County, Shawnee, major developments going on all the time. And we do look at the time value of money, twelve million dollars over this timeframe, plus the loss of sales tax revenues, it looks like there's a point that you just literally have to stand up and draw, I'm sorry, use the red line in the sand, and say, this is it. Maybe this might be the incentive to eventually get something started. Now, I've asked a question before, I can't see why, since Walmart's so anxious to be in their building, that that part of the project could have already moved to hand. But when I still drive by, I see the same vacant ground and no activity, and I don't think there's even electrical wire run to the construction site yet. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes? Jim Harletta, live across street, fifty-nine twenty-one, West Sixty-first Street. You know, I was going to talk about something else tonight, but I think it all goes together. My biggest problem with this whole deal, and I think I sent you an email earlier tonight, is the pinnacle of this whole development thing was when we had the aquarium. Since then, I've seen not only this project, but several others going downhill. I mean, we talked, we went from an aquarium and a really nice development to Walmart. We went to a Section Eight housing that's going to be down the street here, and now I understand they're trying to build some apartments out north here, and I thought it was going to be a nice senior living center, and now I don't even know what it's going to be. Is it going to end up being high rent, or is it going to end up being low rent? So, I mean, that affects me, because housing, I mean, all our housing values are based on how the whole city is doing. I mean, otherwise, you know, that's a long way away, that's a long way away, even down there's a long way away, but it all builds into the reputation of the city. And I just think that, you know, I'm not a high-priced lawyer from Posnelli or whatever, but I have certain values I try to maintain, and we have, well, and I talked to Dave a little bit in an email tonight, Rushton is the elementary school that most of the children go to, my grandchildren go to, but they didn't, they moved over to Prairie Village because Rushton is a title school. And that isn't good. We need to have some things going on in Mission that make Rushton as good as Highlands, you know, or Shawnee Mission East High School, you know, something that has a really good reputation. And I guess I can't say anymore, I'm just worried about the downhill, and so I think that's something you all need to consider when you think about Mr. Valenti and his thing. I don't think Walmart's a good thing, but what's his next plan going to be? Is it going to be something even lower than Walmart? I don't know, Dollar General? I'm not sure what, maybe another Section Eight housing? Anyway, that's all, I'll say my piece and leave. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Roman Garcia, fifty-seven twenty-five Woodson. I think it would be wise of the city to avoid a situation where the developer is able to kind of stall, so the later he receives notice, or the later this is, he's going to be informed that there will be this assessment, the more time he has to stall. So if, even if it's applied in, say, December, then when are we going to receive the money? So if we're stalled by asking for financial numbers and accounting of how the money was spent, and that process starts now versus later, then that should help us receive the money from the developer sooner. And I think that would be in the best interest of the city, because, well, basically, it would be in the best interest of the city. I feel like we need the cash as quickly as possible, basically. Oh, and also, it sounds like, you know, the developer's going to be under some pressure if we pass this, and that could actually be a good thing for the city, because if the developer's under pressure to actually build something on the land, and then, you know, he could start building faster and say, oh, you know, really need to, I'm going to have to start paying this money right away, so now I've got motivation, I really need to get a tenant in there, and, you know, if you're just going to have Walmart in there, you know, it sounds like that's going to be our, the anchor tenant there, then so be it. But nonetheless, we'll have a tenant in there and get the sales tax revenue, various other things, so.
Well, thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Beth Garcia, fifty-seven twenty-five Woodson. I'm a newer resident to Mission, but I've been watching the Gateway Development Project in the news, and I'd just like to comment as a resident, that I've seen a lot of other development going on in Mission that has me feeling very positive about the areas that's moving here. I love what happened with Johnson Drive. I've seen Stag Park go in a little farther up north. We've got the old car lot that's being torn down, I think the Natural Grocers is going in there, the senior housing that's going up there. I think that's wonderful. I don't understand how all of this can be going on, and all these different projects can be happening, and yet this, for some reason, we can't get our cred together on this. To get it done, I understand that things were hard after two thousand, after, after two thousand seven, but I feel like most people have recovered by now, so I don't know what the holdup is at this point. And I feel like enacting the, basically, fine against him for delaying, I hope that it is taken as a serious message, and it is taken very seriously by the people operating on Mr. Valenti's side, that we do want some kind of action, even if it is heaven forbid Walmart. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Here are just a couple of points of clarification again, because I know we have several members of the public who are obviously very interested. So the special assessment process is dictated by state statutes, and our opportunity, just like we do with our real estate taxes and the mill levy each year, we have one opportunity to certify that to the county, and that is in August, and that then becomes effective with the tax bills that are distributed in December. So we don't have an opportunity to include that assessment or address that on anybody else's timeframe other than that established by state statute and with the county. Again, once that is certified to the county and assessed to the tax bill, as each individual property owner in this room has the opportunity to decide whether or not they pay their property taxes. So the assessment does not guarantee the receipt of the funds in December. We've had that conversation very specifically at our council committee meetings, but I do think it's important to put that on the record this evening as well.
Well, we didn't go through this process just for the following, yeah?
Correct, and it is not, it is not, it is not a fine for a delay in the project, it is an assessment for the public improvements and stormwater improvements which benefit that particular site.
Correct, correct. Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, Monica Boy, fifty-five twenty-six, Outlook. My question is, is Mr. Adam, is it right, Mr. Valenti, is he current on his taxes at this point? That's public information, isn't it?
The first half of the tax bill, which was due in December, has not been paid, according to county tax records.
So I guess my, my assumption is if he's not paid his taxes for this year, then wouldn't the chances of him being able to continue, I'm just wondering how solvent he is or his backers are, and I think that settling for a small strategy is not the right answer.
Anyone else? Will be no further public comments, the public hearing is closed. And we open our regular meeting. Tonight, we have several special presentations from our police department. Chief Hadley, are you ready?
Sure. I'm going to deviate just a little bit, and you'll understand why here in just a second. I have a quick story to tell you. Officer Matt Weismer used to work for this police department. I trained him back when I was on the street, a long time ago. He decided he was going to go work for the LAFA Police Department, and soon after he got employed there, he made it on to their motorcycle unit. His partner that rode motorcycles next to him, Officer Kern, was before you several months ago, when Officer Matt from our department graduated motorcycle school. Officer Kern and Weismer have also helped us out several times on DUI check claims. And to show you how Johnson County shares their officers, we have two police officers that are here at our department that have been hired in the last few years from the LAFA Police Department, so it was a very tight-knit group of people. Last night, at his house, Officer Kern passed away. And I bring that up because we have officers that work at this police department, that know them, have worked out there. I was in a wedding with Officer Kern. Sergeant Sykes from the LAFA Police Department is here tonight to recognize Pete Martin, who's about to be promoted to sergeant. So if you guys can please give our officers in the LAFA Police Department your thoughts, I'd appreciate it. So.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next agenda, you have those pictures from... We have a couple of photos that we're going to show you from December fifteenth of this year. Cassandra Ballard was traveling northbound on her thirty-five, just between Metcalf and Lamar. Had blacked out, and her vehicle left the roadway and ended in that position right there. At that time, Angel Torres Malina was driving down the street, saw a vehicle leave the roadway, and decided he was going to get out of his vehicle. Went into the cold water, you couldn't imagine how cold that water is in December, went into that water, and he found Cassandra upside down underwater, and her vehicle still in her seatbelt, and she had blacked out. Angel actually got her out, got her out of the seatbelt, got her out of the car, got her up to the bank, went back down into that car, again, in the cold water, to see if there was any kids in the car. Once he figured out there was no other kids in the car, he went back up to the bank and waited for EMS and the police to arrive. If it was not for his actions, Cassandra probably would not be here tonight. For that, the Mission Police Department and City of Mission are honoring Angel for the life-saving work through the city, and he is here tonight, as well as Cassandra and her family. So I'd like to bring them all down here, and let them apply. Cassandra and Angel, you guys want to come down with your family? And on behalf of the city, we very much appreciate your actions that day on December Angel, do you have any family with you here tonight?
I don't, most of my family is back in Mexico, and I got a, I don't know, she's a daughter, so.
Okay. Cassandra, you want to introduce who's with you tonight?
Ah, yeah, this is my daughter Lexi, and my son Jackson, my brother Jim, and my mother Helen.
Well, again, we very much appreciate what you did.
That's, that was great, thanks, darling, keep it, thanks, I guess, I'd say, um, no.
Angel. Are you in there?
Yes.
Angel, the easy thing for any of us would have been to drive by and wonder what had happened, and you did the hard thing, and we really thank you for that.
Yeah. I think tonight she's okay, you know?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Wow, I had to hear that.
Yes, we said, but the Lord said, "That's an angel."
Thank you.
I can't believe you missed me.
Pete's not easy to miss. Pete, you want to introduce your family, everybody?
Uh, yeah, this is my youngest son, Matt, that's my middle son, Sam, and this is my oldest son, Alex.
Pete started with the LAFA Police Department in two thousand and three, and came to us back in two thousand and thirteen, and quickly showed his leadership skills to us, and as I took the chief's position back in June, we all of a sudden decided to change our promotional process. So to everybody's dismay, it was more than just an interview, which Pete found out very quickly, but he rose right to the top, and I'm very proud to promote him to the rank of sergeant tonight, with his son's help.
See if you can see her voice.
Wants to stab you with a pen.
They can't die, okay?
You're not cool enough, Dave.
None of them bring it last. You should see some more.
That turn right?
Yeah, pop those off and turn them around. He does the one of sergeant picture, taking a nap sometime now. So when you guys turn.
Like this?
No, I'm making a watch, trying to flip it like...
If your dad can do this, you can do it.
Push that through. There you go. Peter, I bet you didn't think you were going to be here for ten minutes. You should have had dress rehearsal beforehand, right?
Sure. I'd just like to recognize Sergeant Lonnie Sykes from the LAFA Police Department. Thanks, Sarge, means the world that you're here, and the mother of my boys, Julie. Thank you.
agenda, has five items. I would entertain a motion to approve.
Mayor, I move the city council about the consent agenda as printed items three A through three E.
Second.
Please follow. Shepherd.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Cowdery.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Motion carries. If you have any questions regarding our community committees, you may ask staff, or bring it up on the news business. Public comments. This is opportunity for members of the public to comment on items that are not on the agenda. Is there anybody that has anything? Uh, action items, we don't have anything coming from the planning commission tonight, so we'll go straight to our committee reports. Councilmember Miller, will you please provide us a report on the finance and administration committee?
Yes, Mayor. This is an item on the Gateway Benefit District ordinance. At the December seventeenth council meeting, the city council approved the statement of final costs and several documents related to the Gateway Benefit District. Earlier in this meeting, a public hearing was held regarding the levying of assessments for the Gateway Benefit District. This proposed ordinance formally establishes the levy and collection of the Gateway Benefit District Special Assessments, as previously authorized by Resolution number six five nine. Once the ordinance is approved and published, a notice of assessment will be mailed to the property owner. They will then have a thirty-day period following publication of the ordinance, within which they may satisfy the assessments in full. If that does not occur, the city will certify the assessment to the county clerk's office with the budget in August twenty fifteen. Mayor, I move the city council approve an ordinance levying special assessments on certain property to pay the costs of internal improvements in the city of Mission, Kansas, as previously authorized by Resolution number six five nine of the city, and providing for the collection of such special assessments.
Second.
Any discussion? Please call roll.
Rothrock.
Aye.
Cowdery.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, community development. Councilmember Cowdery, would you please provide us a report on the two items?
Launch Development Pre-Development Agreement six B. Launch Development currently owns a nine-point-six-acre parcel of land south of Fifty-first Street and Barkland. The site is designated as High-Density Residential in Mission's Conferences Plan. In two thousand and seven, the council approved a site plan for a two-hundred-and-three-unit independent senior living housing development at this site, but the project failed to move forward. The developers now proposing the development of a two-hundred-and-four high-end, market-rate, non-age-restricted apartment at this location. Because of the slope of the site, and in order to achieve a minimum number of units to provide for economics, or economies of scale, structured parking will be required under the apartment buildings. The added cost of structured parking may result in a project financing gap, causing the developers to request that we consider certain incentives for the project to move forward. The proposed pre-development agreement would designate Mission Development LLC and Launch Development LLC as the developer's record for six months, and states that the development is contingent on the satisfactory negotiation of a final agreement, completion of the required planning and zoning process, and agreement on any public improvements and development design. Additionally, the developer will establish a ten-thousand-dollar fund to reimburse any city expenses incurred during the discussion and review of a final development agreement. This pre-development agreement does not obligate the city to approve the final development or any public incentives. Mayor, I move that council approve the pre-development agreement with Mission Launch Development for consideration of multifamily development on nine-point-six acres of land, south of Fifty-first Street and Barkland.
Second. Any discussion?
Well, since Jim brought it up, I didn't know if there was a representative from the project here that could clarify, but, I mean, these are, I wanna say, at or above market-rate apartments, Jim. And I know that you referenced the senior living facility that had attempted to go in there, and it was explained to us in pretty great detail that because of changing market conditions, maybe some saturation in some independent senior living facilities, they just couldn't make that work. I'm optimistic that this is gonna be some really great apartments in a spot that currently is under, you know, that is not developed at all, so I think it's gonna be, I think you're gonna be able to start doing this when you do your hand thing.
I'll just, I suppose I should went here. My only concern is that we started out down there with something up here, and we ended up with something that's down here. And my only concern is, are we starting out here, and then we're gonna end up down here again? That was the only part that I was trying to say.
I understand. And that's...
We certainly hope not.
That's right. So I thought I was, just be aware. We do not have a development agreement with them, as per se. I mean, we are not bound to any incentives.
No, and the developer is here, and I don't know if he'd like to address any of the questions, or just make a quick statement that I think might be helpful, just briefly.
Good evening. I'm Craig Lowery with Launch Development. You happy to answer any questions?
Could you just share, again, I think, some of the information that you shared with the council in terms of the apartments and the square foot lease rates and things like that, I think?
They're high-end, market-rate apartments, which is what our company's main forte is, if you wanna call it that. The independent living facility was a different avenue that we had not ventured previously. In that development, we actually started the presell, and actually had about a little over thirty percent presold, which is a requirement on independent living when the recession hit. So some of the partners have changed a little bit in our organization that was involved in the original development. And primarily what Launch Development does is high-end, market-rate developments all over the Kansas City area. We've developed approximately a couple hundred million dollars' worth of high-end Class A apartments. So we're talking granite countertops, average square foot, surround a thousand square feet, minimum a dollar-ten a square foot, which is average rents of eleven-hundred dollars a month. So there's been no new apartments in your city for quite a while, and this project is surrounded by, on three sides, by some apartments. They're older, but they've been kept fairly nice, and we do believe there's a strong market for some new apartments in the area.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Please call roll.
Miller.
May.
Rothrock.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Cowdery.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Resolution and letters of support for Brin Shore Development as a component of financing the Hero Corner project. Brin Shore Development applies for low-income housing tax credits from the Kansas Housing Resource Corporation during the 2014 funding cycle. This project was not funded in 2014. It scored nineteen out of sixty-nineteenth out of fifty-one applicants, with the top seventeen receiving funding. In July 2014, council voted to amend and extend the development purchase agreement to allow Brin Shore an opportunity to reapply for tax credits in 2015. As a part of the 2015 application, a resolution and letters of support for the project are required for the city of Mission. If Brin Shore is successful in obtaining tax credits, work then will begin on review of the TIP redevelopment project plan application, and it is anticipated that closing on property and construction will begin in the fall of 2015. Mayor, I move the city council approve the resolution affirming support for the proposed thirty-two-unit affordable senior housing project by Brin Shore Development LLC at seventy-eighty Markway Street in the city of Mission, Kansas.
No, Sarah. Any discussion? Yes.
Again, just because Jim brought it up and referenced it as Section Eight housing, I wanna make it clear, this is not Section Eight housing. This is low-income housing that is made possible because of tax credits from the state. There will be two or three units within the development that will be market rate, and that blend of units helps them in their overall score. The other benefit that I see of this project is that after doing an analysis of the property, the council learned that for anything else, retail or otherwise, it becomes very difficult to make something work where the old Neff Printing Building is. The other benefit is, is that it finally gets rid of that ICE or the Neff Building property, and it will be coming down within the next thirty days. So I'm optimistic that this is gonna, again, be another affordable place for our seniors who want an agent place, who have an opportunity to live there, and I assure you, it won't resemble anything that you have in your mind as it relates to Section Eight. It's gonna be very, very well done, very tasteful. And Debbie Crane will personally approve the design she has assured of.
I do wanna remember, we will have another opportunity to vote on the actual agreement, is that correct? Because I really wanna see a redo. We have so few opportunities to have something nice right on Metcalf. We will have many opportunities to touch this project if they secure the tax credits and as we move forward throughout the rest of the year. I am on the hook back there, and I wore it, I'm wearing it, sure, it looks good. Mr. Lieberman is on call.
Would there possibly be an opportunity for Debbie Crane to help do his painting?
Any other discussion? Please call roll.
Cowdery.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Rothrock.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Miller.
May.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Motion carries.
We do not have any...
Mayor, can I ask one more?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Sorry, Jeff.
No problem. Mayor, I move that the letters of support for the Brin Shore project application be signed and submitted.
Any discussion?
Shepherd.
Aye.
Rothrock.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Cowdery.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Miller.
May.
Motion carries.
Does that complete your report? We do not have any unfinished business tonight. Does anyone have any new business?
Oh, your mayor, mayor, I do have, we will have a Ward Two meeting a week from Thursday, so I was just thinking that conflicts and other meetings that we're having, but our first for 2015, our first board meeting. So do we need to reschedule, or are you, is there a difference? So our meeting's at seven o'clock next Thursday, and there's committee meetings happening. So at the community center, a week from Thursday, Ward Two meeting, you don't have to be in Ward Two, any board can come, any resident can come, any business center can come. Please join Councilmember RC Rothrock and myself. We're to see you.
I just wanna mention that we held our first committee meeting of the Johnson Drive, what the new Johnson Drive could and potentially what it looked like. Had a lot of good feedback from that, some great people on there, with some great ideas to get outside the box, and I think we have a real opportunity here to put some things down there that people who live next door to you would like to see. You don't have to have a PhD to be on this. We want people with vision and people with insight into what opportunity there could be. We don't get too many opportunities to redesign Johnson Drive, and really, it's a great opportunity. I would also say Emily Randall is our staff person on that. If anybody in the community has ideas for things you'd like to see along Johnson Drive, keep in mind we're gonna be losing Hobby Lobby, so we'll be losing a lot of things that you go to shop for, whether it be knitting needles, or brochures, or fabric, or things like that. So that may be some of the things you look at, that we could do in a small, small, square foot shop, to have like a quilt shop, or something like that. But be thinking of that, and please feel free to either email me at the email address or Emily Randall. Thank you.
Mayor's report has one item, something all close to our hearts, board boundaries. I have created a task force that will review this issue and bring forward a recommendation in the coming months for council review and public hearing process. The task force members include councilmembers Pat Quinn, and Archie Rothrock, and planning commissioners Mike Lee, Brad Davidson, and Carla Middles. City Administrator Laura Smith will assess the task, assist the task force in their review of the previous work, and advance a final recommendation that will address the variance that exists in our ward right now. So it's something that needs to be done, and hopefully this time it will go a little quicker, and so we'll start that process. Laura, we've finally, we have...
No, well, once we've, I think you've talked to everybody in the last couple of days, and so we'll get everybody's schedules coordinated in the next week.
Appointments tonight, we have a few, like we always do in January. We'll start with the MCBB. I put before you tonight the names of Delsey Chamron, Ward Three, Leslie and Kyle Herring, Ward Three, Philip Loughlin, Ward Four, Bill McCray, Ward Two, Deborah Rushing, Ward Three, Sandy Russell, business owner, and Dale Warman, Northeast Johnson County Chamber, for appointment to the Mission Convention and visitor's bureau, with terms expiring December thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen.
Mayor, I move the city council uphold the appointment of Delsey Chamron, Leslie and Kyle Herring, Philip Loughlin, Bill McCray, Deborah Rushing, Sandy Russell, and Dale Warman to the MCBB, with terms expiring December thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen.
Second.
Please call roll.
Quinn.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Cowdery.
Aye.
Rothrock.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, I put before you tonight the names of Mary Funk, Ward Four, Ann O'Leary, Ward One, Mark Raddinger, Sir, Ward Four, and Walt Seabird, Ward Two, for appointment to the Parks and Recreation Commission, with terms expiring December thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen.
Second.
Need the motion, please.
Need the motion.
Mayor, I move the city council uphold the appointment of Mary Funk, Ann O'Leary, Mark Raddinger, Walt Seabird, and for appointment to the Parks and Recreation Commission, with terms expiring December thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen.
Now, second.
Please call roll.
Rothrock.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Cowdery.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, I put before you tonight the names of John Arnett, Ward Four, and Frank Bruce, Ward Three, for appointment to the Sustainability Commission, with terms expiring December thirty-first, two thousand and fifteen, and Bill Nichols, Ward Four, Manny Trio, Ward Three, Andy Highland, Ward Three, and Nicole Moran, Ward Two, for appointment to the Sustainability Commission, with terms expiring December thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen.
Mayor, I move the city council uphold the appointments of John Arnett and Frank Bruce to the Sustainability Commission, with terms expiring December thirty-first, two thousand and fifteen, and Bill Nichols, Manny Trio, Andy Highland, and Nicole Moran to the Sustainability Commission, with terms expiring December thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen.
Second.
Please call roll.
Quinn.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Cowdery.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rothrock.
Aye.
Next, I put before you tonight the name of Gordon Kemp, Ward Two, for appointment to the Tree Board, with a term expiring December thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen.
Mayor, I move the city council uphold the appointment of Gordon Kemp to the Tree Board, with a term expiring December thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen.
Second.
Please call roll.
Miller.
Aye.
Rothrock.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Cowdery.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Motion carries.
If I could, I'm gonna embarrass Gordon for a minute, because, you know, he's one of the guys that really is responsible for Mission Possible project. Lived up north, and has been waiting for months to get in down here at Mission Square. And so he's not only on our commission now, but he's also a new Mission resident, and we're glad to have you, Gordon, and it's a wonderful story of what you guys do with Mission Possible. So, thank you.
That's right. Thanks, Dave. And thank you, Gordon. Next, I put before you tonight the following four appointments. Donald Chamron as City Treasurer, Keith Drill as Municipal Court Judge, and David Bell, Nathan Owens, and Robert Scott as Municipal Court Judges Pre-Dim.
Mayor, I move the city council uphold the appointments of Donald Chamron as City Treasurer, Keith Drill as Municipal Court Judge, and David Bell, Nathan Owens, and Robert Scott... Keith Drill as Municipal Court Judge, and David Bell, Nathan Owens, and Robert Scott as Municipal Court Judges Protown.
Second. Please call roll. Shepherd.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Rothrock.
Aye.
Cowdery.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next, I put before you tonight the following for appointment. Gilmore and Bell as Bond Counsel, Ellers Incorporated as Financial Advisor, Lathrop Engage as Land Use Attorney.
Mayor, I move the City Council uphold the following appointments with contracts expiring January 20th, 2016. Gilmore and Bell as Bond Counsel, Ellers Incorporated as Financial Advisor, Lathrop Engage as Land Use Attorney.
Second.
Please call roll. Rothrock.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Cowdery.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Carries. Thank you. Well, that's all for the appointments. And everyone that's here, those who want to thank you for volunteering your time. We couldn't run the city without you guys. So thank you very much. Next is City Administrator's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick items. And then, as most of you know, Martin Riverola, who we were supposed to be honoring tonight, came down with the flu. And so he is not here. And I do, he did send me an email late this afternoon that he'd asked me to read. So let me touch on just a couple of other things. Next week, we are kicking off. It is a meeting intensive week, and we're kicking off our comprehensive plan update and our Park Master Plan Process for 2015. All of those are very exciting. Steering Committees will begin their work, and then we'll start to have in coming months, public touch points and work sessions, lots of opportunity and conversation around the future of our community. So encourage everybody to stay tuned in and involved through that process. Councilmember Shepherd referenced the NEF property demolition. The asbestos abatement has been completed. We are waiting to issue the notice to proceed on the demolition until we see the certification and the reports that were submitted to the state. But we expect that that demolition would be ready to proceed in the very near future. Contractually, that building does need to be down by the end of February. So we coordinated that with Panera, and so look for that in the weeks ahead. Also, I've had some questions this week about whether or not we bought new police cars. Because the look of our police vehicles are changing, we have not, and too badly. And the staff in the department were looking at some vinyl appliques that were very difficult and costly to maintain. So they have pulled those off and relettered the police vehicles. So the ones that you're seeing on the street are just, we're going for a look that's easier to maintain, I think, more consistent. So they're the black with white lettering. They say Mission Police Department on those. So if you get questions about that, we will be putting some of the new vehicles, which we turned over as part of our fleet on the street here in the coming weeks. But it's not an all brand new fleet for the city of Mission. And with that, I would like to read the email from Martin. You know, Martin spent thirteen years, this is the first council meeting that he missed in thirteen years of his time with the city of Mission. So he said, never say never, right? But he did, did send this. Mayor and members of the City Council, I do not believe that I have missed a City Council meeting due to illness in my almost thirteen years in Mission. Apparently, it is never too late to start new things. I want to extend my appreciation to this governing body and those past for the challenges and opportunities given to me which have allowed me to grow professionally. I also appreciate the tight knit camaraderie, support, and inspiration of past and present staff who give their daily lives to the service of Mission. Without all of you, I would not have enjoyed my work and succeeded at completing each task. Of course, a special thanks to former Mayor Laura McConwell, Mike Scanlon, and Laura Smith for the many years of mentorship and guidance. Finally, to the entire Mission family, including its residents, business and property owners, and many others, I appreciate you for letting me serve. Mission has become a second family to me. Although I now end my employment with the city, I will not be going very far. In the future, I will ask all of you to reach out to me if you, if in need of any assistance. I hope to continue to patronize your businesses and attend your events and maybe someday move back to this area. I wish you the best in future endeavors. Remember, healthy and vibrant communities are not maintained or built overnight. So have patience and rewards will continue to come. That's definitely Martinism, right? Thanks again for the last thirteen years. I will be seeing you around, Martin Riverola. So I am sad not to have the opportunity to be able to thank Martin for his service of thirteen years to this community in person. He's had vision. He's had patience. He's made us laugh. He's made us want to pull our hair out. But I think he's made all of us better people having had the opportunity to work alongside of him. So we will certainly miss him here as part of the city health family, but are glad that he has the opportunity to move on to mark and serve in the larger regional world. So we wish him all the best, and we'll catch up with him. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thanks, Barb. Yes.
I just want to say, where people are, where they start and where they finish are two different things. But Martin had the opportunity to come to this country. He actually received his citizenship while working here in Mission. I used to sit and watch him. Couldn't do the pledge of allegiance. And the day he got to do the pledge of allegiance, it was the proudest moment on his face, a smile and a beam to light up the roof. And it's an honor that we got to serve with such a phenomenal man, with such vision, and a kind heart, too. So I'm just real proud that he gets to go and do.
Yes. Thanks, Dave. Well, we do not have an executive session tonight, and if there is no further business, I will adjourn.
Second.